We'll call the order at seven oh three, this town council budget meeting. Seven oh three, April tenth, twenty twenty-three, if we can get all the rights for the budget allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. Constitution under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Everyone can be seated. Then bring this to. Item four, consideration of the town council proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget. Just as we go into these conversations, just want to thank everyone who's been working with each other and all the meetings you've had throughout this. Your early spring, looking forward to every robust conversation council members hopefully reaching consensus towards a budget resolution. So. I don't know if Tom Andrew Foley, if you'd like to add anything about the process.
I'd like to thank my staff for all the work. Especially our finance director Hancock and others that have assisted her putting stuff together against very helpful and and. I want to thank all of you for being so collegial through all this and working so hard diligently for zero. Uh hey, so thank you for volunteering, thank you and thank you for getting us through this. So all I have, sir.
All right, thank you, Brian. So I'll open the floor to conversation if there's anyone would like to speak about. The town managers adopted budget and perhaps going forward, what you would like to adopt as our budget resolution. Council, right?
Sure, um. I think last week at the public hearing and with all the emails we got, there were. A lot of requests. To allow for the Board of Ed. Through budget to go to referendum. I think. We. Well, I might propose that we all agree that the bed proposed budget of five point nine six. No longer needs to be part of the discussion due to some changes, policy changes that were made. From the Board of Ed side is proposed by Dr. Willett. Some other. Changes on how things will be funded. Again, from Dr. Willard finding savings of five hundred nineteen thousand dollars and with the two hundred thousand dollar contribution from ARPA. To the Board of Ed, I think the five point nine six is. No longer what the Board of Ed is looking for. So that's the good news and I'm really happy to see that our. Our group of the town council and the Board of Ed have been able to have discussions. To. Allow us to consider a lower number than what I think we all saw as sticker shock at five point nine six. Um, I would like to see us. Bring the board of bed. Up to the total that they were asking for, including. You know, the reduction of five hundred nineteen thousand dollars from the savings Dr. Willett found, taking off the two hundred thousand dollars from ARPA. I'd like to see us bring the board of that whole. I'd like to see us make some reductions on the town side. I've spent a lot of time thinking about. The. The voices that weren't here last week. Uh, the voices who were here and talked about. The struggles, the financial struggles they've experienced and asking us as a council to remember those people as we take this in consideration. And that's important, I think. I'm not alone in saying that those voices are important and we need to continue to listen to them. And to me, that means that we need to consider the budget with. A lot of thought. That we are not rubber stamping anybody's budget, that we are spending a considerable amount of time and effort. Reviewing the budget, talking about the budget, sometimes arguing, sometimes complaining. And that we don't. Put forward a budget that is. Not well considered, not well thought out. And certainly one that does not. Take our residents for granted and that we we finance responsibly. There's another piece to that and we heard a little bit of it. Part of us financing responsibly is looking at the long term impact of. What our town provides to our residents and how that reflects on our property values. And. I I don't think it's a surprise to anyone that a house in talent of. I don't know, two hundred thousand, I'm sorry, two thousand square feet on a two acre lot. Has a value that is higher than that same house on the same size lot in Vernon. And there's a reason for that. And the reason is the services we can provide in talent. Most notably, our school system. If we cannot continue to make smart financially sound decisions in investing in our schools. We are making a decision. To reduce the value of every single home in talent. It's a long term. Prospect. It's not easy to quantify, but we've seen studies that show. For every dollar that's invested in our schools equals twenty dollars increased property value. That seems. I don't know if that's sure or not, but some pretty sound research organizations have put forward claims like that. Divesting in our schools like we have done for the past ten years. Is has a detrimental impact on everyone's property value. On the richest family in town, on the poorest family in town and on everyone in between. And so to me, we can't consider a budget. I can't consider a budget. That does not. Make. Financially sound decisions to ensure our school system. Continues to provide a quality service to our students in order to ensure our property values stay where they are. Doing so is a disrespect and essentially taking money out of the pocket of every single family in town. So that's what I'm thinking about as I make my decision tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Gray. Anyone else that would like to? Nice to talk. I go to the chair, even then, Councilman, you're checking.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I've been hyper focused on. Putting forth a budget that can pass a referendum because that's the only budget that matters. I have seventeen years of referendum information here in front of me. And the budget that we're looking at now, in my view, will not pass a referendum and we're forced to go back to drawing board. Last year, we put forth a budget at three point two five percent increase. That failed. We had to lower the budget to two point five seven and that that eventually passed. I don't think the number three is a magic number, but that seems to be the level at where we need to be to get something through a referendum. Quite a few years ago, we had five failures at referendum and. I I think I've heard the number before, but can. Can you Lisa or Brian, can you tell me how much it costs a town to run a referendum?
I don't have that off the top of my head. Lisa, do you remember?
It's probably about eight thousand dollars. For. For referendum.
Okay, so eight thousand dollars.
You know, between six and eight thousand, just.
Thank you. And I I think that's where we're headed if we're over three, you know, and I hear. Everybody that came to speak and I agree with everybody. And I'm called a, you know, I've been called a pessimist, I've been called the fetus. I I call myself a realist. Uh, because I have the history in front of me and and I made a comment a couple of weeks ago. I said, the vast majority of people out there don't pay attention to what we're doing here. Um, and I and I got some interesting feedback about that comment. But I looked at it another way. It's like, and and we're not paying attention to them. If we put forth a budget that won't pass a referendum. Because there are people out there that vote and there's a lot of people out there that vote no when they see a number like three point four. So that's where I'm sitting right now. Uh, I think we're probably headed for a defeat unless we can lower this down because I believe these voters are going to make us. Make us cut it.
That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Even Councilman, you need to check.
Just a statement. Hello, everybody. I missed last week. I got late because I had other obligations before that event happened. I had to reschedule, but um. I did go back and watch the video in the minutes and everybody was very powerful that spoke on for all different reasons and I respect them. Not really tough numbers right now. It's just more of a statement. I appreciate everyone. And I think everybody knows my goal was always to work together and come up with something. I think one of the mistakes we made last year was a split vote and I don't want that again. And we have to be here. To like one o'clock in the morning, no kidding, Danny. But you know what I mean? I really want to have a real good conversation. You can hear me saying, John. Um, but I really think. We could make something work that would also support the board of it a little more. Those people know I didn't agree with that large number, so that's no shocker. But like Katie said, that number did come down. Went around four percent between using different funds, I think, the ARPA and stuff Katie mentioned. Um, but that's more just a. Open a statement that I really appreciate everybody and I learned over the year from everybody. Especially these two next to me.
That's your health for Luba.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Um. Again, this is more of a just position of where I am. I mean, I'm we're. We're taking this very seriously for everyone that's out there and that although it may not seem like. We that we were divided along party lines and that we're entrenched. Nobody's entrenched in anything. Everyone that takes is that's been elected to this position, takes his position very seriously. And that for me, I've gone through this budget book and tried to see what we can do. Not as thoroughly as as some other people, just because, you know, that's just that, that's math is not my equation, that not in a my strong point. But it's I've gone through the uh, through all the presentations and really taken a look to see. Where things are and where we could possibly find savings and where where we lie. The most difficult thing is that we have. Essentially two battling sides and it's not the people in this room, it's the town itself. You have an almost equally divided number of students versus number of buildings. And those are essentially sometimes very competing sides where you have. A side that wants us to invest in education. I understand that we need to do that, that we need to invest in our education system. But we also have people that as we heard, although it was a small number, because not many of the people that that want to speak on this. Attend these types of town town meetings. That we have to take those into account as well. And I think Ms. Maury said it very, very appropriately. That we hear those voices, even though they may not be as many. And that they're on fixed incomes. They have very limited means and. That they're the ones that we also have to take into account because unlike some other people, like unlike some other sides where we could find other funding. Or that there are certain things that we could do or that we could that. There's other assets that we can get directly to the school to increase the spending for the school through various government fundings and other things like that. These people don't have that opportunity. And to say that, well, they can come to the town and look for resources. We don't have that opportunity as well. We don't have unlimited funds provided to them. So it's that's a very difficult thing. Um, and so that's something that. I take very seriously and that I really struggle with to try and find that that happy medium. I'll be upfront with everybody here. I I took a hard swallow last time when we voted on that two hundred thousand dollars to add back into the Board of Education budget. I will not do that again. I I think that that adding, doing anything, moving any type of funding from either any type of stabilization fund or anything else. Moving it for one thing to increase the operational funds for another group or for anything else is just a shell game. And it's just something that I can't support. So if there's any proposal that includes that. I can't, I can't support that because that is short sighted. That we, whatever you use, any type of short term fund for a long term operational uh, uh, cost. That that it that's that's poor planning and I can't, I just can't do that. And I think that sort of building along the lines of what uh. What Miss Reagan said that. You know, take that's something that although we've heard a lot from from people that came here to speak that. Oh, you're again, you're being defeatish. You're not letting people decide. Let the voters decide. Let us decide if that's what we want. You've got fifteen years of history on it. Where fifteen years where we have never made any type of budget increase over three percent or just barely over three percent. I I think that's, you know, almost historical pattern. And I think that's something that we need to take into account and that for us to just say, oh, we're going to put this out there and let let the people decide. They decided last year, we put out a budget and they decided last year and 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 it didn't pass and we had to come back as as was stated and come back with even more cuts. So I think that we need to invest we can to try and get to as good a budget as we can. Um, that we think that the uh, that the town could support. That um. I mean, there's a lot of other things I could say that, you know, I think that. Well, I'll just leave it at that because I don't want to. Say anything more that might get people upset about certain issues, but I think it's something that. Really to. To come in with a certain budget and say, okay, we're throwing the budget here. This is what we want. But it's up to you with the town council to decide. You may not be happy with what we decide. You know, everyone's got to do their due diligence, put forward their best budget and on some on some things. I don't feel that was done in good faith. And so now that that's something that they may have to, that people may have to face on, face up on. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Luva. Councilman, you.
First, I just want to start by, you know, thanking Brian and the staff and Lisa for. You know, the questions, the back and forth, the the budget book as a whole. Everybody knows how much I love the form of this budget book. I'm so happy that they went with this program. Because it breaks everything down. It's marked my favorite pages in here, which wrap everything up and gives everybody a great view. You know, a lot of work's put into this. And these conversations are in no way meant to distract from the amount of work that's done on all sides, the Board of Ed side, the town side. And everything. That being said. I think the conversation around investment or lack of investment is. Just not pure. It's not, it's it's not valid in a sense. Every year we raise the budget. That is investment across the board, right? It's just a matter of. How much can the town afford the full increase? And again, it's the whole town, right? It's everybody and. We can't keep kind of looking at this as the one side or the other. It's just the increase of the budget period. And can the town afford that? And it's been a rough couple of years and people are still trying to come out of this and it's. It's discouraging when you see um, the town side. As a whole, the Board of Ed included, going up higher than what people in the private sector are seeing, right? Because they pay the taxes, they pay the salaries, they pay the expenses, they pay the office supplies, they pay everything else. So, um, you know, and as John said, I was looking for that piece of paper that he has right there and it was called in. All weekend to look at like the historical, I hear people are saying, just put it forward, put forward the Board of Ed's ask, yeah, we did that last year and it was voted down. And yes, I was one of the people out there saying it's too high. And if this comes in too high, I'll be another person that's out there this year saying it's too high. You know, I I I'm not going to just agree to a budget to make everybody feel good, right? We're elected to do the hard thing. We're elected to be the voice of the people and to. Put forward something that is in the best interest of the town. Now, if we came back and said we're doing a zero, then people could say we're not investing. But to say that we're not investing is just an outright lie. We are investing. And the budget's going up. You're getting more than you got last year, regardless if it's one percent, two percent, three percent or six percent. It's an increase. It's an increase that we're asking our residents to pay. And at this point, now my opening statement here is. I want to get into the meat of this. I think it's too high. Right now, I think, you know, I don't think it'll pass. I I don't think a three point four is gonna. Is gonna pass referendum. Um, and I think we need to listen to the people. They've said no many times in the past fifteen plus years. And there's nothing out there, no magic bullet that all of a sudden makes me think people are going to say, oh, I've got all this extra money. Let me give the town more. No. Right? And I don't know that I want to ask them for it. So. Then jump into the numbers whenever everybody wants. Sorry, my phone's blowing up. We have a death in the family and everybody's trying to coordinate the. Arrangements and everything else. And it's my mother-in-law's birthday, so you know, my phone's blowing up. I'm sorry.
No worries.
I can't shut it off. I can turn it down a little.
I heard every single member. And they have their own opinion. Uh, majority of them. Almost every single one are like it. It's about the town. Town, town is a small town. And for me, it's like. I've been here for almost twenty, twenty-two, twenty years. And besides Big Y, I haven't seen anything. You don't, you didn't see any new there, new coming in, anything else. And as Tommy says. Every year, the weather is going up. Whether that the town is going to get the money to support it. And and. As Mr. Luva says. There's a two sided. Either we can support the young generation or the old generation. To me, young generation is. Yes, town or town supporting the young generation. Plus they have a backup of uh. Their folks, their parents and everybody else. The old elderly. They supported the town for twenty, thirty, forty years. Who's going to support them? The fixed income, everybody else. I would say about fourteen to fifteen percent has a fixed income. They used to put in making doughnuts for a cup of coffee. But now in relation to anything else, even the making doughnuts went to three dollar coffee. It's a dollar, dollar fifty. They have three to four dollar cup of coffee. So anybody can afford it. A lot of people come back. So the fight over here is either. Which way to support it, either younger or the older. I think that's that's the most common theme over here. If you support the younger means the elderly is going to pay the price. And I don't think so beside the order of the city, we have any other way to pay for those folks. Yeah, I don't think so. That's even. I don't want to go to the state because as everybody knows that they are the last thing, last resort, but at the town level. What is the choice you're on? Can we? Do they need more of the avenue? Get more businesses, get more housing, whatever it is, but we haven't done anything, anything in the past. So I don't know whether. Is this where that way? They say that's what it is. I mean. We are stuck in the middle. Everybody is responsible over here, but like. It doesn't matter what we decide, it has to go to the referendum and. People have to take it from there. I don't know what else to say because. It doesn't matter what this story I make. It's going to, it's in people's hands. It's people's hands. So whatever they decide, you can, you can mark, mark down three. Three, four, two, four, five, four. It doesn't, it doesn't make any difference over here. Because we can talk, but they have to make a decision.
All right, thank you, Councilor Khan. And I think one thing I would just add is from my perspective. I'll say it was already brought up and I think we'll have further conversations about it. I I do think this is a good year to utilize the tax stabilization fund. I think the. Amount of increase in insurance inflation, I think this is what it's, you know, purposes for. I know there is a. Communication for some creation regarding the fund that there are some physical copies looking incorporated into the minutes regarding that fund. And I think it's both a judicial judicious use. It also is being applied quite quickly to a higher amount than what's currently in there. So. I think it doesn't necessarily hamstring future councils to use that fund to offset um. Any increase in taxes or the budget or to perhaps alleviate significant decreases in other budgets, but I hope that can be a. An open minded conversation because if you go into the hard numbers, I think there has been some really great productive conversations. I think for some savings on the town side as well as some opportunities to find a level budget that could go to referendum and get some reasonable support from the community. But with that, I'll open the floor to discussion on those hard numbers to. Suggestions and commentary from various council members. Council, everybody.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Well, one of the questions I had is that one of the things that has come up is the issue regarding. Uh, town overtime and if there's a, and we're over the past, you know, four years. That as a council member, I've regularly seen that we have, we've had money left over that's gone back into the, you know, town balance. Generally, it's been the neighborhood of hundred thousand, two hundred thousand dollars per year, every year. Either on the edge Board of Education side or the town side that it ends up going back in and that at the end of the year, we're like, well, we have this extra money. Can this be identified for a one time cost and we'll spend it on that rather than, you know, rather than letting it go back into whatever fund or, you know, other, other things. My question is, rather than doing that. Can we just reduce the budget by that amount? Reduce it so that we're not looking at having two hundred thousand dollars left over or a hundred thousand dollars left over next year. That hasn't been spent for whatever purposes. And I'm just using the overtime fund as just sort of an example, but looking back historically throughout throughout the past. Several years, every time there's been funds left over. That's why I'm saying that I think that at this point, we need to find that savings. We need to reduce that amount. So that next year, we're not coming back with two hundred thousand dollars to look to try and spend for anything else or reinvest. Let's save that money now so that we don't have to worry about that future point. So I question you, Mr. Foley, is if. If if necessary, would, you know, would we be able to find as uh, as put forward in the uh. Uh, and one of the sections for the note that Lisa just sent out to us, Miss Hancock just sent out, where. It's with a debt payment plan, uh, the payments that have been reduced, that we'd be looking at about hundred ninety-five thousand dollars reduction. To get us down to that two point nine nine percent, which would leave us a one point eight percent tax increase. So it's still increasing, but not as much. Is that something that we'd be able to find?
It would be painful and difficult and I would look to see suggestions from the council, but whatever you ask, we'll. Bill, Lisa and I have discussed. More painful scenarios and certainly a lot less painful. And it comes down to, you know, I'm going to look to council, we'll look to council. And what services and where do you want to come? And we'll make those cuts.
And then then on the contrary side of this, this is the one time where I'm actually be asking for funding to be increased in a certain area and you know which is what it's going to be. But as the as a liaison for the BRC, uh, you know, I I've been said this several times before. Um, but as a step with them having a statutory mandate, I know that we may disagree on what level that is. I'm looking to have some of that money, you know, some funding to put back in there, at least a larger operational funding. Because this is something that finally, this is the group that has finally recognized what their mandate is. And what they need to do to provide to the town in order to meet that mandate, both under state law as well as under federal regulations. And I'm asking for that, for that, for us to find a way to be able to find that. Uh, you know, I'm not asking, you know, I know that they asked for at one point, I think it was a. Twelve to fourteen thousand dollar budget. I know that's not something that we're, that's realistic. I think that a realistic starting budget for them to be able to. Get things started and be able to start meeting those requirements as a setup fund would be in the neighborhood of five thousand dollars. I think that's a reasonable ask. I think that's something that I know that they're asking me even for more, but I can't go with good faith going in with that. Other than asking for that amount. So that is something that I'm asking us as a council to uh, to look to specifically ratify to. Other than asking for that amount, so that is something that I'm asking us as a council, to, uh, to look to specifically ratify, to, to have that. Uh, you know, we earmark funds for the Board of Education, I'm asking this to be a earmark fund for the BRC. And that's my ask before this, before the council, and thank you very much, Ms. Foley, I appreciate your answer.
I just wanna add to your. Thing about the VA, we do have that on our. I think it was a little bit higher than that, so I.
Well, that was, I think that was for the, uh, for the, uh, memorial.
We have a few things.
We have two things on there.
For them.
For the VA, you know, what was the quote that the VA sent, right, and then for the memorial, and then the memorial, we do have two on there.
Yeah, well, this is something beyond the memorial, this is something where.
I understand, I understand, we did two things on there.
Alright, I appreciate that.
Yeah, no, we do talk about it, I think.
Can I just, uh, add to that real quick for you? On the ARPA agenda was the budget request. From the VRC, the whole amount that they requested. And we put it on the ARPA agenda to try to at least get something out there to discuss. So, um, that is out there, and it was a pretty significant number, but it, it wasn't to do with the memorial or anything that the. Specific request out there right now is for the budget that they had asked for after all the budgets were already. Sent into the manager, and then the, the, uh, ARPA request also has a separate item for their memorial area.
Alright, well, then I, I, then I thank the ARPA committee for that, because that's not something that I was aware of, or that, you know, that's been, that's been formed up, so. I appreciate that, and if that's something that is going to be seriously considered, then, then I, I will, I'll rest on the prior, uh, request.
One more thing? Sure, this will be the most generous year the town has ever been to the, the R C, based on what's gonna happen out there. The roof at the gazebo. And, um, the request that, uh, Lisa and Connie just mentioned, so. I find them very important as well, and this will be, this will be the most, biggest windfall for them, so it's a difficult year to come across, and seventeen K. Was their initial ask, um.
I understand, I know, I understand, I don't, I'm, I, I'm not minimizing it, I know that all of us very, respect them very much. I appreciate the support, but of course, it's gonna be a, an increase for any year when the prior budgets were zero. So, I'm just saying, but I, I, and, you know, Ms. Foley, you and I have had discussions about that, and I understand completely where you're coming from. It's just, I, I have to advocate for that as well. Sorry, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Luba. Any other comments or questions? I mean, I guess I'll, oh. I guess I'll say, you know, to start, I think some of the conversations I've heard in terms of savings, you know, were reductions and potentially contingency. Um, you know, some savings, I think were found through. I think fringe benefits, I think it was insurance, so yeah, Mark, uh, Brian, would you like to write an update on some of those savings that may have been?
The insurance, and Lisa will give you the exact detail, that we believe, and Mike's not here to do double check again today, but he said it was a rain last week, was around. Um, ten thousand dollars split in half, Lisa, you what were the apps on that again?
Are you talking about health insurance or property liability?
I thought the health insurance, what, what were you talking about, Steve?
Yeah, I think it was.
The two things we talked about today, Lisa, the five, the four and the six thousand dollar savings that Mike.
Oh, that was property and liability, or, hold on, I know it's written here. Yeah, that was, uh, property and liability and workers' comp.
And so that's.
We had some savings possibly there, there's about fifty-six hundred for workers' comp and a little over four thousand. For property and liability, as far as health insurance, nothing has changed regarding savings. Uh, for next year's proposed amounts. That, um, with our consultant, we're still at the same number.
Okay, and I know, I think there was also a lot of discussion during our budget conversations about the gas. You know, I think there's a lot of consternation that we were budgeting to buy, is there opportunity to lowball a little bit and?
Yes.
Okay. By what tune do you think that would?
Um, please on gasoline.
We, um, we looked at different numbers and, uh. We looked at probably, uh, bringing it down to three dollars a gallon, because the, the rate. Is only half locked in for half a year. And we have a, we have an unknown for the next, the six months, starting from January of twenty-four through June of twenty-four. So that's the big unknown, so what we had done was trended originally. At a, at a much higher per gallon rate, and we're looking at, you know. Possibly can reduce it down to three dollars a gallon, that would result in about an eight thousand dollar. Savings i- on the town level to reduce it to that per gallon rate.
Okay. And then, I mean, I think, I think there'll be some more discussion on potential savings, but, but like one other comment, I think just kind of bouncing off the loose in terms of requests, you know. There's only any surprise, I'm, you know, big supporter of the library, and I do feel like they kind of cut themselves prematurely, and I, I personally feel like the. Program budget should be reinstated as much as possible, I think they're looking to hire new children, see young adult librarian, and. I think my barber was in, and she asked what the regulars cut with the patent year for programming, it was children and young adult programming, so. I think it hurts whoever they're trying to onboard to come in on July first, to see their budget, you know, cut sixty percent, so. That would be my one request, as we're looking to hash out numbers to strongly consider reinstating some of those funds, if not all of them, to. Help support those efforts. That's what I need, Jim.
Lisa, um. Couple of questions, one, the, do you have the value of the Teamsters contract that we just settled? Of the increases?
No, but I, I can get back to you, I know. I think they settle for three percent in the current year. I, I, I don't wanna venture to say what it was. Um, I just know what we put in the budget was less going forward for next year under the contingency area. But. We were gonna try to make do with what's in there, I think we put in. Let me see if I can pull up the spreadsheet, if you can bear with.
Eight thousand dollars in the, um.
How much, say that again?
It's like, isn't it like two twenty or something like that in the contingency?
No, no, hold, hold on one moment, and let me just pull it up. Okay, hold on, whoops, that's a long. Okay, so you're talking about just the payroll contingency, right, because contingency has. All like the Veterans Recognition Commission, the historical, it has all those monies in there as well. Um, but the, the, the amount just for the personnel contingency is about a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. And that includes, um, raises for. The Teamsters. Um, potential raises for the fire.
When is the fire contract being negotiated?
Next year, so the, the money is not in their budget, it's just in the contingency for that. And it also, oh, I'm sorry?
When next year, and when will it be effective?
Uh, it'll be effective for next year, but they'll be negotiating all year, so it probably would be retroactive payments to the beginning of July. Once they get, um. Their contract negotiated, I'm not involved with the contract negotiations, that's usually Mike and, and Brian.
I believe it's.
But, you know, I, um, just out of caution out of your negotiation process, there's money in there, it's not a heck of a lot for them. Um, so you have that, you also have the, the non-union raises. For the not affiliated, that's also part of that number. So, what, what were you asking, I'm sorry, I might have gone off track.
To understand the, the two numbers, what is the contingency of forty thousand, and then the personnel adjustment of the hundred and fifty-two thousand?
Okay.
This is the value of the Teamsters increase.
Okay, the value of the Teamsters in that hundred and fifty-one thousand is. Bear with me. Is about. Thirty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, thirty-five thousand for them.
Yep.
There's no way John's team is getting a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in increases.
No, no, absolutely not, um, but the, the other thing is, let me see here. The amount that we budgeted for Teamsters, there, let me get to the percent. Here are these guys. That number. Okay. Okay, that number is. Two and a half percent, and I think they settled at three percent. So the value that's in the contingency is only two and a half percent, so there's a differential. Of the other half percent that, um. That we're making up within the budget of how we started off the numbers, so.
Yeah, but, Lisa, what's the one fifty-two, because if Teamsters is thirty-five thousand.
Let, let me go through it with you, we have.
Yeah.
Oh, hold on. Okay, that includes about forty-three thousand dollars for the non-affiliated. Employees. Okay.
And that's an assumption of two percent?
That's just two percent, yes. Then there's the. The Teamsters, which is about almost thirty-five thousand. Then you have the fire. Which is. About fifteen-five for that. Then you have these, um, there's certain fringe benefit costs that we have to pay out. As part of the, the agreements that are from years ago, that's only a thousand dollars. Um, then you have, um, the sick. Oh. You have sick and vacation payout, and you have, um, sometimes employees will. Terminate, and they have the second vacation that they get when they terminate. That that has to be paid out, and there's not always enough money in attrition savings, depending on the situation. And how long the person has been with the town. Um, so, that number there, and has always been in the budget at twenty-five thousand. Then you have, um, there's another allowance for. Sick pay, if, if anyone has over a hundred and eighty days of sick pay accumulated. There's a payout amount for that, there's very few employees who have that, but whoever. Is in that area, that's only eleven hundred dollars, so that's part of this. Um, then, another piece of this is sixteen thousand five hundred, normally this number. Is much higher, and that's for fractional payoff, payroll, that is. For, um, the way we budget in our, for gap. We don't budget for the gap, we budget based on annual salaries within. The budget, but then it has to be split up at year-end, a portion to one year, and then a portion to the next year. For gap reporting, I absolutely hate it, but it makes, because it makes it difficult to budget, but we have. A fraction of a payroll. That it doesn't even out within the budget, so there's a portion that's set aside, that number was probably close to twenty-five thousand last year. It, it's based on the amount of days that will have to be paid out at year-end versus the next year. So that number sixteen-five, and then the last piece of this is, um, fifteen thousand dollars. That is for unanticipated, um, wage adjustments that may come up, or if there's, um. Different negotiations that may take place, there may be. Uh, an example would be hiring somebody and trying to get them in, and. They can't start at the bottom of the range, but it might be bu- budgeted at the bottom of the range. So there's a little bit of money in there, that's not the only thing, there's other contingency things that come up. But there's a little bit of money in there to be able to provide for those sort of, um, negotiations. And that's what makes up that whole amount.
Okay, uh, and what's the forty thousand dollars contingency?
That is for, um, things that have come up throughout the year that, um. You have a boiler that might go down, or you have. Uh, we have an accident, or, or say some insurance claim, we have a twenty-five thousand dollar deductible. On some of our insurance items, there's not enough money set in the budget for these unanticipated expenses. Most commu- communities budget. Much higher, they may have, um. Maybe a, a three to five percent of their total budget as their contingency, forty thousand is, is minimal. Um, for a community our size, and again, it's for things that come up that weren't budgeted, that. Warm is going on. Um, that aren't budgeted for. Various reasons, things that come up.
Okay, um, do we have a projected, projection yet of what the end of year, um. Lapse is gonna be, oh my God, I'm talking like the state, the money left left at the end of the year.
Um, I did put that in the budget book, I have not updated anything since, I mean, we're running into. Situations daily with, um, legal fees, our refuse and recycling fees that went up. And, uh, we had never anticipated that, so, but a lot of that. Um, in the budget book, I did project where I thought we would be for year-end. And I ha- I haven't changed it.
I don't know where the.
It would be, um. I'm trying to find the pages, it's, it's part of the. Overall projection, like projected revenues, projected expenses, plus you will see under the. Bear with me. Okay, so pages seventy-four and seventy-five in the budget book. Shows the long-term financial forecast, so you'll see, um. The projected twenty-three revenues are a little over sixty million dollars. And the projected twenty-three expenses are fifty-nine, eight, seventy-three on that page. So the differential will be between there and, let me see, yes, I do have the transfer out. Information, so that's where I could tell you.
About two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars.
Two forty-seven, and that's, that's kind of been the number, you know, that will, will go back to the town. Depending on how everything else goes. I mean, right now, everybody's kind of trending towards using their money, if, you know, if it's not gonna be used. For certain things, um, for example, the snow removal may not. Be totally used up. There'll be other costs that we need to offset that we didn't have budgeted for, like I said, for example, the refuse and recycling, things like that.
Okay, um, the NIP mine, we've talked about this briefly, but I know it's not in an offset in DPW. Is that, I think it's about twenty thousand dollars, is that accounted for in the revenue anywhere, I don't think it was.
What are you talking about?
The money for the NIPS, the.
Okay, no, um, the NIPS, there's, it's about, it, we didn't get with the state, it said that so far, I think we've gotten. Like fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars, and that is sitting in a separate account. Um, not part of the general fund, the reason being is because. When they got the new sweeper, their, the intention is to be able to do more sweeping than what they had. Originally outsourced for, so they put money into the sweeping account. Um, for the disposal of, you know, what they sweep up and everything, but. The concern is that what they put in there. the concern is that what they put in there is not going to be sufficient for what they're picking up. So to get through the first years to see where they're at, the fifteen thousand is sitting in that other account, and if um, there are insufficient funds, those funds could be tapped on to be used towards any shortfall that might come up. After we get a year under our belt, we could probably look at, you know, budgeting it better in the general fund and having the revenue be a revenue source in the general fund.
Okay, um. Then the the last question I have today, uh, Brian, I sent you the, I saw the quote in the J I with a hundred thousand dollars, not not using the overtime, like not not speaking really well right now, I should have eaten before I came. Not um, like having money left from overtime. Um, so what is the town looking to do with that hundred thousand dollars? Is that part of the two forty-seven, two oh five, or is that um additional?
The way it was explained when I discussed it with Lisa was, I can, I can offset sixty-five of that right, right away for an ongoing ethics commission legal fee. Right, um, before we even get off the door, um, is that accurate, Lisa? Um, we cut back the amount of salt for next year. But the price of salt went up.
Right.
Uh, for next year, um, so they can, they, I believe they somewhat offset. We have a pretty decent supply in there now, so we're able to save, show some savings in theory there uh, with with the salt that we have.
So are you gonna buy it early because of the projected, the prices are gonna just increase on that?
So are you? We have the least, Lisa, did we already lock in on the salt for next year?
No, salt, um, right now is a hun- it's expected to be a hundred and nine dollars next year. And it's not a locked-in situation as of yet until we um go to buy it. I mean, that that's the locked-in amount, a hundred and nine, from my understanding.
So can we pre-purchase salt with that money and then found on that?
What we will do is um, look at what we can top off the shed with, the salt shed. The the best thing to do is get it and get it in the shed rather than, you know, in Humbert. If there's any funds available, um, this was the goal, because when we budgeted the salt for next year, Brian and I worked together with with the Public Works Director and reduced the amount of salt that he was going to be able to budget for with the intention of possibly encumbering some funds this year or topping off the shed um, with funds this year and reduce what is being budgeted next year because of the rate went up from sixty-five dollars to a hundred and nine. So normally, he budgets about twenty-eight hundred tons of salt uh, in his budget, and we brought it down to, I think it was twenty-five hundred tons with the hopes of, like I said, being able to use if there was anything left from this year, and if there's any funds left in the budget to encumber it if we can't have room to purchase it. So that way, in case they do have a bad winter and it falls short than what they usually buy, um, they'll have the abil- a bit ability to get it. Because what happens is if you don't lock in, for example, if you don't say, we need twenty-eight hundred tons of salt, and you say, well, we're only gonna purchase twenty-five hundred because that's all we have a budget for and commit to that. If they end up needing, needing the other three hundred tons of salt, you're at the mercy of the salt company because um, in the past that has happened, you're, if you didn't already lock in your tonnage that you're going to buy, it's very difficult sometimes to get that extra tonnage at the last minute.
Is this, Brian, a good time to go back and evaluate if we can do a sand salt mix? If that's less salt, so savings?
I have a couple of reasons for wanting to do that, um. Yes, but I don't know how fast we can do it and what there, there'll be a conversion aspect to our machinery as well. Um, when we add in the solid sand, I I want to increase.
Calibrate.
Now, keep in mind, we do do some, a low-salt sand mix already on some of our unimproved roads. I would like to expand that to some of the the neighborhoods where there's uh, salt issues, um. But we have to be careful on how we approach that in regards to liability and a lot of legal reasons, if somebody gets in an accident, we've changed it, um, that sort of thing, I want to just look at that. Um, so there's a, there's a weight to changing it, uh, but it's something that I definitely want to discuss. We put it on last year, coming into this winter, um, but I I definitely want to look at that. I don't know how much of a savings uh, there'll be, considering we also have a lot of salt to learn too, as it is.
Well, I would think if we do a mix, then we could definitely kind of realize some savings. And if we've already got a truck that's calibrated to do the un-unfinished roads, just kind of putting those pathways, those roadways on that list. I think, yeah, I don't know that it's gonna be a huge savings, but I think it's something.
It'd be significant savings, I can say that, however, no towns in the region either.
I'm okay with being first.
Okay, so am I, so am I, um, and and something I discovered with Scott last, before last.
We have a brand-new sweeper that can go right after in the spring and just sweep off stuff.
Concur.
So, um, all right, so that's something I think we should look at. Maybe we use the offset there if they're not gonna buy salt, so to figure that part out. Um, so overall, looking at what I've spent a lot of time, obviously, looking at this, um. I have some suggestions, some stuff that I think, I agree with you, Steve. Uh, partially, I think, on the library, I put in, I think they definitely should get at least the twelve hundred dollars back for the books that they cut. Um, I have that in my my calculation. Hate seeing, you know, cutting books, but um, a couple of things that I came up with, and I can send this to to you, Lisa and Brian, if it, if it's of any worth after our total conversation. Um, not giving up on that fifty thousand dollar reduction in DPW um, for the street sweeper. I took your ten thousand dollar reduction for gas and diesel, the nine thousand dollar deduction for workman's comp. Don't try to write all this down, it's gonna be too much, I can talk too fast. Um, town council printing down by a thousand, town council office supplies by three hundred, room, lower DPW parks and wrecks contingency by ten thousand. Um, I want to see the NIP money um, reflected in the reduction of the cost in DPW for the um, cleanup. I put in twenty thousand, I think we'll probably easily see that this year. I put back in twelve hundred for the library books, lowered zoning board of appeals to by thirteen hundred, lower the economic development council by a thousand, lowered engineering by twenty-five thousand. DP, I'm cutting overtime, I'm not cutting overtime, I'm cutting the increase in overtime. So I think um, we have to kind of live within what we have in here, so keeping overtime flat. So that's a twenty-five hundred dollar reduction in streets and roads. Oddly enough, it's a fifty-two dollar reduction in parks and wrecks, which I kind of feel like is nickel-diming us, but um, don't go ahead and I'm gonna take it. You're gonna put it out there, I'm gonna take it. Um, lowered printing and accounting by three hundred, office supplies by two hundred, financial record tent help by fifteen hundred. Uh, emergency services office supply by a hundred, town historian by two hundred. We have not historically spent the historical money for the town historian, so I'm saying we can take the two hundred. And history has dictated that we have historically not used the town historians, two hundred dollars, so we are gonna remove that. It was bad, but we can keep going with that one. Um, historic district going down a thousand, still giving them an increase, but only a thousand dollar increase. A couple other, like, animal control, other equipment that I don't remember getting an answer on was two hundred. Some other books and supplies, a couple hundred here, a couple hundred there. Um, and then the big one is taking sixty thousand out of the contingency um, for the overall number for Lisa, and that gets me about a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars savings, which is underneath our projected balance at year end of the two forty-seven. My offer, what I'm throwing out there. Enough to at least start a conversation. Uh, my number's there that gets, uh, doesn't quite get us down to three, the three percent is what it gets us, gets us closer to it.
I think there are some good suggestions there. Um. I guess my one question would be the reduction in the engineering bringing that down to fifty thousand. Ryan, would you be concerned at all if we have uh, future requests for needs for ADA or other projects down the pipeline that cutting down that much might hamstring?
Problem with that is we don't, it's erratic, we don't know what projects lie down the road, and it's difficult um, to predict. And, you know, we're we're topping off this year.
If we ask for more, are you gonna give it to us? Next to, you know, a lot of you might not be in that seat, and we're gonna have to wrestle that. But Lisa, what are your thoughts on that? And we tapped out, what are we at this year, we're over that already, right?
Over seventy-five. That's not according to me.
Yeah, we've been.
The, what's the engineering talking about, Chuck or Mike?
It's just with our. Airing line went up to, it was like thirty thousand in prior years, I think twenty-five thousand, thirty thousand, and that went up to fifty thousand this year, and it's going up to seventy-five thousand next year. I don't know where we are right now. But.
Are you talking the engineering budget?
Yeah.
Engineering. Engineering budget has always been seventy-five thousand.
We haven't spent that. You look at the historical act, actuals, that's in some.
Uh, some of that is we had to move it to other accounts. Um. Also, some of that had to do with what we've done away with was prior year POs, using up those first. We, I had tried to put a stop to that after, you know, after I was able to manage that. So unfortunately, trends don't always show the true story if you don't have the information behind it. So there's other expenses in some places that they were charged off where they should have just been charged to the budget, so you would have seen the true expense over the years. You're going, you are seeing some of it now moving forward, not using prior year POs and things like that.
He, uh, I have an email from uh, March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three from Lisa. Uh, Brian forwarded it to the whole council that says there's fifty-two thousand dollars remaining in the engineering professional services account.
That that doesn't include the green. Lisa, is that accurate, the green uh, engineering that we're doing right now?
Right, I think we took up um the green after that, after that number was provided. I could try to look and see if I could find what the balance is right now.
I understand, if you don't mind, uh, what you're saying, Steve. However, if there are uh engineering costs, say, for the green project, couldn't those engineering costs be uh, paid for as part of the green project and not just from our engineering on-call engineer?
But sometimes the, excuse me, the the, you gotta pay for the engineering before you even consider how you're gonna pay for the actual project out front. So there's not that predictability typically with that type of project. Um, so that's, that's my only interjection there.
Yeah, so yeah, the idea is, my question is, you know, having a level of comfort to, like I said, not hamstring next year's council in terms of any engineering needs, um. But I think overall, I think when I was looking at some of the savings that were suggested in the back and forth, um, I think getting that higher amount is reasonable. And I can initially, and then it gets in the sheet, but there isn't a lot, uh, I thought of getting to eighty-two, fifty-one. If we can go further without significantly impacting staff and um, you know, making sure that you're able to do their job, I'm comfortable with reducing that budget a little bit further. Um, and we have the board to discuss down the line, but I think that's I'd be amenable to that.
I'm sorry, Steve, but what, what are you amenable to?
I think it was roughly, what was the number, one?
What did you say, five ninety-six? But again, that's just, you know, I, that's putting, that's taking, you know, sixty thousand from this contingency. I think what we just went through, you know, the odds of paying out twenty-five thousand in sick pay or um fifteen, on top of fifteen thousand and um, the wage agreements and all these little, and the forty thousand that's in the contingency piece and that, you know, that's aggressive, but it's. But my can, my my caveat on this is I'm not looking to reduce this to give the Board of Education more money. I think the Board of Education with a three percent increase is the highest increase they've gotten in a long time, and it is investment in our children. It is a three percent growth, so I'm not looking at this as like a um you know, a bargain or a trade-off. I'm looking at this as how do we get this to a number that is fair for all of our residents for an increase? And something, as John has pointed out, that will pass referendum, so.
Doesn't break.
I'm, I'm sorry, I still don't fully understand what number you are comfortable with. I don't, I'm sorry to put.
No, no, it's okay, no, sorry.
There, just didn't understand.
I think I'd be, I would probably want to have more conversation about the contingency, but I would be comfortable going over a hundred thousand. I know it'd be eighty-five with, or eighty-two was in that initial area, but um, but I will say, I do feel at the same time, I think the three percent for the Board of Education, while is one of the largest increases in a while, I think they also have a significant impact on insurance, and we've done some help with that, but I don't think it does enough, and I think there's still some really strong impacts. So I think that's where I would be seeking out compromise that are looking to increase the, or decrease the town budget specifically. I think we should offset a little bit, and that's where I think mentioning tax stabilization fund to help provide some additional funding to the Board of Ed without necessarily impacting the mill rate in the avenue. So that is one area where I'd like to see some potential incentives to capitalize towards um, you know, trying to reduce the overall mill rate and tax rate, because I know the history, you know, we're kind of focusing on one number, which is the percentage increase, but we've also, I think we should also be looking at the mill rate. Nori, even though that is a flexible number, is the number that ultimately impacts the assessment of the rooms. And looking at the history, even, and I think it was a six-one vote we sent out, you know, a referendum that was over a mill increase, and it passed pretty um, solidly. And I think that, you know, we're at a point where we could probably be above of, above of Brian's request and still, you know, put out a reasonable mill rate increase that's not substantial. I think, you know, keeping under, I kind of, he having a conversation on how how many mills and the numbers, but I think the the history, you know, shows to some degree that under a mill is capable of passing um, regardless of the budget increase, because at the end of the day, the, you know, the budget increase is significant in a lot of other towns in part due to inflation. But the mill rate is kind of what ultimately people see when they get their, you know, mortgage adjustments or their tax bills, you know, what what's mill rate equal to their assessed value, so that's just kind of my my piece on it.
I can tell you personally, it, I'm, it's a no for me. Anything that's, if we're using stabilization money, again, we're using one-time money to increase a budget permanently and with the Board of Ed budget and MBR is a permanent one. So anything that's increasing with Board of Ed in any way is a hard no for me. It's a three percent increase right now that is there. I'm not willing to go any further.
I thought it was just a council with your hand.
Well, I, yeah, uh, I think uh, Councilor Newshill pretty much said it all for me, that I I was willing to compromise on the two hundred thousand dollars last time. Uh, that that was, as I said before, that was a hard decision for me to make, where I was a strong no, often to the point where we were willing to discuss it, and then that's where I, I changed my vote and agreed to support it. Uh, but I agree at this point where any money that we put back in is a permanent increase to the Board of Education. That, uh, and that, that's something that we, again, my whole thing with that is, whatever we said it this year cannot, can never go lower than that. And so I'm all for trying to find uh, find savings, but as far as saving something and putting more money back, putting money into, in further increase on the uh, on the Board of Education budget, uh, that I I don't think, would I be able to support that at all? And I mean, I think this, this is the time where there's no posturing, there's no, oh, maybe considering I, that you need to know where I stand on this. And that's where, that's where I need to be upfront and say that I would not be able to support taking money and then increasing it or offsetting anything with the Build of Education budget. I did that last time, I'm not doing that.
I think it's fair to point out too, you can always reduce the town side or increase the town side, there's no need on. Can't do that with Board of Ed, but.
The memo that Lisa put on our desk. I'm sorry, is it already, if I say something?
Yeah, go ahead, Captain.
The memo that Lisa put on our desk says the tax stabilization fund currently has a balance of one hundred forty-five thousand, one hundred sixty-two dollars. Uh, and then this, that value came from excess ECS from fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. Uh, and then this, that value came from excess ECS from fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. So if, um, you know, the board had calculated that into their budget, then, uh, we would have paid, you know, would have impacted twenty-two, twenty-three and now twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, not giving that back to the Board of Ed is. Uh, it seems like a no-brainer to give it to the Board of Ed, um.
The ECS doesn't go on Board of Ed. ECS has a grant offset. It goes to the town. It never goes to the Board of Ed unless we are increasing the amount that the state gives us. And then, um, we're using, all we did is got less more. We still lost money. We still lost, uh, um, several hundred thousand dollars. We just lost less. So it, it doesn't ever go to the Board of Ed. It's not statutorily required to unless it's an increase, unless you're receiving more year over year. Um, and tax stabilization should be used to stabilize the taxes as an offset, as a revenue, not as a way to increase. Like we're using a tax stabilization fund or your proposal. We use a tax stabilization fund to increase ongoing permanent expenses. A tax stabilization fund is ideally set up to be a revenue offset to lower the mill rate. So if you guys said you wanted to use the tax stabilization fund to lower the mill rate, that's what it's intended for. It's not intended to use.
But Tammy, that, I mean, if you, if you use a tax stabilization fund, it's going to impact the mill rates. If you increase the Board of Ed by one forty-five, one sixty-two and implement the use of the tax stabilization fund, you have made no impact to the mill rate. So it can be interpreted that the use of the tax stabilization fund has stabilized the mill rate. I mean, it just depends on, you know, we can twist these words, we can go back and forth on this. Um, I'd like to see us use the entirety of the, uh, fiscal year twenty-two Tax Stabilization Fund, which is one forty-five, one sixty-two, to increase the Board of Ed budget as a starting point for increasing the Board of Ed budget.
And I understand what you're saying with that, but at the same time, that stabilized it for this year. But then we start off with the higher level of the Board of Education next year. So now we have to do something else to stabilize the, the mill rate for every following year. So I understand, I, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but it's, it's just, again, a creative movement of money so that we're cutting, you know, we're, we're keeping this, the mill rate steady this year or keep, keeping it to where we want this year. But then next year, we're facing higher budget by a hundred forty-five thousand dollars for the Board of Education. So now we gotta come back with additional creative financing to keep it within, within levels. I mean, it's, it's a matter of, you know, if we, if we were using it to increase or, or to decrease or offset costs elsewhere, okay, sure, because then it could be balanced out at a point in time. But every money, every bit of money that we put back in the Board of Education budget, and I support Board of Education, I support Education, I know how important it is, but it's same come. Every dollar that we put back into it, that increases it for next year. That's a new starting point next year. And we need to be able, we, you know, that's something that we need to be cognizant of. Just like, just like with the contracts that we passed. Every co, every year that we con, that we approve a new contract, every new contract that we come in. And I've said this before, and I know I'm going to sound like a broker record, but I've been sounding the bell on this from when I first came on, that we need to be able to find ways to finance what we have going forward, that the insurance costs, the raises, everything else. From the very first time that we, that I got in here, I was saying, you need to come up with a way to finance this, which will not increase. Be, be cognizant of that. And every year, it keeps, we keep coming back to this, well, this is something that we didn't take into account. Or we should have taken into account when we pass this, when we pass this contract, when we pass this last time. And nobody is. And so now it's finally time where you have to, we have to start holding people accountable. And if this is the, if this is what the contract is going to be going forward, then that's what they need to plan for going forward. And that they need to find cost savings to offset that, not, you know, not just continuing to increase the, uh, increase the amount and then looking for us offsetting in other ways when that's not, that's not how it should be done. I, I, this morning, I totally respect what you're saying. I understand completely what you're saying. It's just, I, I disagree with the financing on that.
I understand what you're saying too, and, and, um, I think our investing in our staff is not only the right thing to do, but i, if you don't do it, you don't have any staff. So, um, there, it's not. If we chose, to use your example, to not give people pay raises, then we're not going to have staff because people are going to go out to wherever they can get pay raises. And if we said, okay, we're only going to give you a pay raise, uh, we're going to give you a pay raise, but we're going to make cuts other, elsewhere to offset it. You know, that probably means that you've increased my workload or, um, given me more kids or classroom. In reality, the costs of everything are going up. And we are at a point where we decide if we're going to fund those increased costs or not.
That's a great conversation. And, um, I just, John, did you say three percent for the Board of Ed? Because I'm looking at their thing over the last few week, years, excuse me, year after year, it hasn't been three percent. There was two percent.
No, I was talking about the, the total increase.
That, that's the entire. Okay, I thought somebody here said that the Board of Ed budget is.
I said it's three million, it's higher than it's been in a long time.
Okay, so I did hear that.
Right, now three percent this year is higher than it's been for quite a while.
Um, thank you for that clarification and. So I hear what you guys say. It's kind of like a little dispute between the tax stabilization. Wouldn't happen. First, I want to say I agree with Tammy and Steve, um, okay, you said it could reduce the town size, so, um, both. Part of the, even make it, or whatever. So I think we've really done a homework on that, like, um, I don't really believe in nickel and diamond, but I think this year, uh, we kind of need to. Um, I'm just wondering if this could be, I mean, I think I have a number in mind, but I don't want it to be a dispute between a hundred and forty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars. And this would be a little even lower than I originally was thinking, like, what if we split that in half? And there's still some money left, and I think I've heard that there'll be more money deposited to the tax stabilization at the end of the year. Um, we just can't use that money right now because it's not basically in the bank, right? So I don't know if that's something, just, I really just want to continue the conversation, not just across, you know what I'm saying? So I think we can get there. I know there's not, nobody's going to be happy. The public will never be happy with us, and we do have a tough decision. I do respect all our residents. Um, when I was on Board of Ed, it was always the education. I'm still for education, but I think over the past year, definitely learned there's a lot more than that. There's, um, all kinds of families that need help and like some elderly. I mean, I, I want to help them too. So I've kind of got a full bit of, such Board of Ed, I've taken a different look on the bigger picture. And I think that's a lot of growth for me. It is. I mean, no, people again will not be probably happy or disappointed, but that's okay. I'm not, I'm here filling a seat for other, other reasons. So I don't know if that's even something we could consider even talking about. I know it's the biggest thing is that health insurance. And I appreciate Lou and John. I know it was really hard for Lou, um, that couple of weeks ago, but I really was, they left here very happy, knowing we, oh, you all were happy about it. I mean, you know, I, that's the first time I heard about it. I'm like, whoa, that, but. I don't know. I, you know, the Board of Ed has, it, it's in the town side, right? That health insurance line, we're not actually gaining staff. We're going to lose some staff, what I've heard, no matter what, even if we drop, like still they're short two hundred thousand, they're going to still have to find a way to find savings somewhere. The town's going to have to find a saving, like figure out that savings, but find different lines to choose from. Unfortunately, yeah, missing both. I don't. But that helps me. I don't have a lot of money, so I get it. But I, I, no, I don't. Again, I think I've grown a lot that I don't want to pick a side anymore. I just want to breathe and my husband thinks I live in my own world. Probably do. I don't know. I.
Just don't come visit me.
But that's just, I mean, if, it, it really wants some sort of, some sort or something. I know, I, I would like to, you know, possibly get to like a three-point-three-five, but I don't even think you guys have got to even consider that. I don't even think you want to have that conversation. Um, that, I mean, that was the Board of Ed increase, but the overall tax increase to the town would be two-point-one-three. And that would still be lower than the town managers proposed at two-point-three-two. So that, you know, tax increase is still lower. And it's basically, you know, bringing the town side down to four-point-four-eight and the Board of Ed a little bit up to three-point-three-three-five. I don't know the math between what they're asking or need. I think the Board of Ed is short three-hundred-something thousand dollars. You know, so it's just something more to consider. Um, I hear what you're saying, Lou and Tammy and John, I respect you guys, you, you know, I do. So again, that's just something, I mean, if we need to break for five minutes and talk with our caucuses or whatever you want to do, do that. Um, but that's really where I'm at, so. Um, but that's all I have now, so.
Thank you, Councilor Newshill. And I guess maybe, no, this is kind of put, put, uh, my share again in the hot seat, but I, but I guess, you know, do you have a clear, you know, favor or unfavorable in terms of the use of the stabilization fund? Or if there's some compromise that we utilized a portion of the existing balance, you know, but. And I think we, we heard very clearly from John and Amy, I think you spoke more clearly to the, to the budget history side, you know, your thoughts on that.
Yeah, well, originally I was, um, against using the tax stabilization fund to offset the BOE. You know, I think, Colleen, you mentioned half of it. Um, you know, I'm willing to have a conversation about that and what that will look like. I a hundred percent agree with what Lou says about creating a hole for the next council to have to deal with or the next Board of Ed to have to deal with. But I like to think I'm sort of reasonable on certain things, so.
That's all right.
I, I, you know, I, I think it's worth a conversation, but I, I, I'm still hung up on the, the entire number that's going to be on the ballot question that people are going to see. The BOE number's not going to be there. It's going to be, well, the BOE number will be there, but they're going to be looking at the whole increase. And if it's set, we're at about three-point-four now. Um, and I've said it multiple times that I don't think, I'm talking about the entire budget increase.
It's going to increase three, so with, I was just basically, I don't know, with the higher than the seventy is three-point two-six, and that's still lower than the managers proposed, that three-point-four.
And it might go even further based off of if we're taking any of that, you know, some of those numbers are based off of the. And, you know, part of it's based off of the eighty-two thousand decrease if we're going to, you know, increase that by half or more that, you know, further decreases the town budget and I think, you know, impacts that bottom line. So I think it brings it down towards probably, you know, further under what the town manager proposed.
Sorry, Brian.
I completely understand and respect all your decisions. Let me do apologize. Thank you.
Yeah, so, um, yeah.
So I don't know yet. I mean, you know.
Yeah.
I think we still talk about it.
Yeah, definitely. Um, but thank you. It's all, I want to say that, I know. Okay.
So I guess at this point, I mean, we're kind of, I think we've done a lot of focus on the town increase and potential reductions. So I guess maybe the question would be probably to Brian and Lisa. So let's just say we, you know, put forward a decrease of, let's just say one, one forty, like not the full one eighty-six, let's just say one, one-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars off of the town budget. What would that look like if we, you know, maintained the three percent on the Board of Ed and what would the new percentage be for the town increase? And kind of a breakdown of, you know, potential mill rate, tax increase, spending increase.
So Lisa's in her office, so we can, we can go, if you want to break or, uh, we can go, probably figure that out.
All right, so, you know.
Can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
Um, the hundred, you're, you're recommending one, want to see what a hundred and forty thousand would look like? Keep the Board of Ed where they're at. And, um, I also, would that include us adjusting like fifty thousand dollars off of debt in that hundred and forty thousand reduction? Or is that in addition to the fifty thousand that I'm going to be able to reduce in debt?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chair, yeah, I may request if we can get both.
Yeah.
I think that that would be helpful.
Yeah.
Didn't you say that the, the reducing the fifty thousand off the debt though, doesn't really, it offsets, so it doesn't really reduce?
It'll reduce your spending percentage number, but it will not reduce your mill rate because I need to take the revenue out that supports that increase. Um, but redoing the debt management plan, um, I'll have to look at, you know, there, there's a reduction there that I could take. So that, that's what I was just wondering if, do I just take ninety-thousand off of the town budget and then the other fifty from the debt, or do I take a hundred and forty and the fifty? And I think I understand that you said you'd like to see it both ways.
Well, I think that, if I may.
Yep.
Right, um, I think that seeing the ninety-five with the fifty, then the one forty-five without the fifty and the one forty-five with the fifty. That way we get, you know, it's a full spectrum.
I'm totally confused. I'm sorry.
Okay, so the ninety-five thousand dollars and the fifty thousand from the debt management. Then one hundred and forty-five thousand, just flat without the fifty thousand dollar debt reduction. And then I think that we already have inside here the hundred and forty-five thousand with, uh, including the fifty thousand dollar reduction. Is that correct? Inside that email that you sent, Steve, you said one forty, I mean?
I want, yeah, one forty, yeah.
I'm sorry, one forty.
Yeah, someone forty, so that's why the one forty-five is confusing.
Sorry, my bad.
There was, there was one proposal that I was asking, you know.
I just, between.
Do and. So I mean, if you're wanting me to look at ninety thousand off the town operating, fifty thousand off the debt, I can do that. That's one scenario. The second scenario is take a hundred and forty thousand off of the town operating and fifty thousand debt?
Yes.
Okay, and then what was the third one?
I think we'll just leave it at that. Keep it simple.
Yeah, just do it.
Okay.
But then I, then there's part B, section C of it.
I'm a visual person. When did we get to fifty thousand off debt? Where did that happen today?
That would say we, we, uh, yeah, I trust that's in the.
Got it. Got it. Thank you. I appreciate someone clarifying that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So, so, oh, sorry, that.
And I, I guess the question, I'm sorry, just before we go further, so how much time do you think, Lisa, just to work out that number? Would you need in terms of the, the council, you know, being here, if you would want to be at ease or be at recess, would you work on those numbers to?
Yeah, I would recommend you be at recess because I'm trying to run the meeting for the, all the Zoom stuff too. Um, and maybe fifteen minutes. Let me see how quickly I could pull something together. Would that be okay? Would that be okay?
Can I read the math part? No, I'm good, but when you say Board of Ed? Hole, do you mean what is left, like? What we're trying, like they're short the three hundred and something, is that what you create by making a hole that, that request or?
No, no. No, I think I was saying, um. I think it was sound like there was some conversation about possibly using part, you would say part, oh.
Yeah.
Tax stabilization, so you're not using all one forty five, but if there's a way to get consensus towards using maybe half of it, so. That, so I've seen that using the whole of that stabilization, but a portion of it towards.
The two, yeah.
Towards the board education.
Yeah, okay, that's what I kind of thought.
Oh, wait a minute, did I miss something?
Yeah, I think there were two.
Yeah, no, the other.
Two, one.
Have a quick caucus before you ask her to do those numbers.
Yeah, she definitely.
Uh, that would be my, my recommendation or my request, Mr. Chair, is for us to. Have a five, five minute recess to caucus before we decide on what numbers we ask Lisa to run. So that we don't have to go back and forth.
I appreciate that.
Okay, maybe could you email it to her, so she has it?
Well, I think what we're gonna do at this point is I think we're gonna do a, do a brief caucus break to discuss and then send back. The requests to Lisa. And then if we need an extended, I mean, she can get her, she already has a couple of numbers possibly in mind, but. Uh, when we return, you know, once there's a poll request. You know, we can better understand the amount of time it'll take to provide those numbers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So then.
I motion that we take a five minute recess.
Second.
Alright. In over the discussion, all those in favor, see if I'm saying aye. Alright, that is, you know, as we are in recess for approximately five minutes.
No, recess is so.
You will want to mute it up there, please?
Yes.
Yes. I'm gonna mute.
Final.
All right, we are reconvening at 9:00 PM. And I think we're just waiting for Lisa to pop up.
She may be on, she might not know her video is on.
Okay, if your video is off and she's muted, she might be asking, well, she should be on, oh, there she is. But you're still muted. So I think the scenario at this point that we're.
Sorry about that.
No worries. So the scenarios I think that were put out at this point was either 140, you know, 140 off the town plus that $50,000 reduction in debt service or the 90,000 off the town plus $50,000 reduction of debt service.
I have those two analyses done.
Okay. So what would the analysis be? If there's actually, if you're comfortable, Lisa, are you comfortable sharing your screen just so that folks at home?
To.
Everybody in the audience can see it too.
There one minute, let me try and get here. Oh. Wait a minute, I have a lot of different screens open here. I make sure I pull the right one.
Make sure to manage your tabs too. Teacher was teaching a class and.
Yeah, I'd be mindful of, yeah.
Just give me a second to. This again. Can you see my screen?
Yeah, we can see it. It has the Excel spreadsheet uploaded, so.
Okay, now let me make sure this is the right one. Yeah, all right. So this one here. This one here is the 90,000 off of the Board of Ed, uh, the town budget. Okay, and the 50,000 off of the debt. What that comes out to is a.
Lisa, sorry to interrupt. Just one quick second. Are you able to zoom in? I know you're at 100%. If you go to like maybe 120.
Yeah. How's that?
Is that much better for?
Better, yes, thank you, thank you.
Okay, all right, good. All right, so this particular scenario is the one with 90,000 and 50,000. All right, so that brings you to a total operating expense increase of 3.17% down from your original 3.40. And you would be at a .79 mil increase for a 37, 37 mil rate, which is about 2.16% increase in the tax rate. So the differential is your spending increase is 317, your tax increase is 216.
Oh, what would be the proposed mill rate, Lisa? Sorry, just.
I'm sorry. Let me see that, all right.
It would be 37, 37, is what you're sharing? Okay. Uh, row 110.
They're not on the bottom.
Got it.
So it'd still be a 3.34% expense increase.
No, 3.17.
Oh, I mean before the 50,000, before the debt service.
You mean just operating expenses 3.34 for operating, but the overall town, you know, overall budget in total went from a 3.4 down to 3.17 with those reductions. See that number right here?
And then what would the other scenario look like, I guess?
Other one.
What's the capital improvement fund going up 63,000 for?
I'm sorry, oh, that's that's the capital improvement plan. That's how much it went up from last year to this year.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's, yeah.
So here is the one with the 140, let me just double click. Yep, the $140,000 cut to the town and the 50,000 off of debt. That would bring you to a 3.08% overall spending increase and a 2.05% tax increase. And the mil rate would be 37, 33, oh, sorry. Is that better?
Yeah, that's good.
37, 33 for the mil rate, a .75 mil rate increase and a 2.05% tax increase.
Thank you, Lisa, for writing those numbers during our recess, so I guess at this point I would probably throw out there the level of comfort with either scenario to council members and if we can get a consensus on on that for being the final budget towards resolution. Yeah, we did. I did it at nine o'clock, yes.
And if I may, so just, just so that's clear, so that's the overall complete budget.
Yes.
Is, so that would be, you know, would be with those two reductions that, of course, now it's not up there anymore, but that's. No, no, that's, that's all right.
It was either 3.17 for 90,000 off the town plus 50 off of debt service or be a 3.08 if it was 140 off the town and 50 off of debt service.
Okay, thank you.
Am I totally missing something? I thought we were also, I requested if we use half of the stabilization fund towards or that we not run that scenario. I mean, I talked about that for like 10 minutes and Johnny seems. Why, like, likes and wanted to talk about.
I mean, in a brief conversation with, with John during our recess, just one-on-one, it sounded like that wasn't. So it sounds like there's.
Conversation, why did you entertain me, what, like, 10 minutes ago saying it was a good idea? I mean.
I think that what it is that it was brought up and then we caucus and after a caucus that we decided within our caucus level that that it's not something that, that we were able to consider.
$70,000. I mean, that is one, I mean, I think I went down even if you know me really well with Board of Education. I just think that, I mean, you're not even compromising something more when you know the health spending has you know, gone up and we don't know. I mean, they're not, the only reason why they have a tax increase is because of the jam there and, or both sides, I mean, right? So I mean, I think that with the crease in at least half of that, like I said again, I would have liked to use more of that. You're still got a budget number, you know, that would be.
Right, my, my, again, my whole thing is can we get to, to a number where we feel comfortable that will pass a referendum? You know, I think under three is great, but I think we're getting closer. I think we're in the neighborhood. I think the likelihood of this pass, passing is, I don't know, maybe it's a coin toss at this point, and I don't know, but um, you know, I'm willing to support either one of these as, uh, you know, moving forward because um, you know, I, I think that potentially they could pass.
And if I may, to answer your question directly, because I know that you put it directly, we can't do that. And I was, I was upfront with you before, 200,000 was my highest. My 200,000, I went at 200,000. I said right then, I would not vote anymore and I can't. I know that we're trying to compromise here, but I compromised last time. And that's what it became down to, where I, I, and I understand how much work you're putting in, how much you really thought about it and I, you know, I understand what you're saying. But I just can't, I just personally, I could not, you know, it's essentially for me, it's a death of a thousand cuts. It's this and then this and then this, and I'm not pointing to you directly, I'm just saying that this is an issue where every time it's like, okay, well, this, and I draw a line in the sand and then next time it's like, well, just one more thing. And I just, I hit that limit where personally, I just could not support it and I owe that to you directly as an answer. So that's what it is. I know, I know, I know, no, and I'm not, I mean, I'm not expecting you to, 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 to.
I get it, it's just we've worked so hard and I know what you're saying. Again, I didn't want to use that money. It was pretty clear to Sammy, Katie and Steve.
And Pammy.
That man on the phone over there. I get what you're saying, I really, really do. I mean, I, I get concerned when we do things on principle and not what's actually right for the community as a whole. Our students don't have a right, don't have the option to vote. They are a community. They are a future. Let's be real, if they could vote, they would probably vote for their education. My daughter, you know, business teachers on the block over there. That business teacher is essential for many kids that want to go into business. I mean, yes, of course, the Board of Ed can do their things, but would move, would not move a cut or whatever where they want to. But to me, $70,000, at least one staff member, we're already gonna lose other staff members, you know, with the cut, right? So I really think and again, I get what you're saying, but if the next year, you know, Tammy might disagree on the, you know, the health is, on the health insurance line. But if that comes back again, that's more, they're gonna have more money than, and again, of course it's a risk, but everything we do, buying a house, buying a car, whatever we do is a risk. You know, it's just something, you know, I'm disappointed that you go in the hallway and that's it. Why are you even going to hallway? What?
It was something we discussed and for me, it's not a matter of principle. And it's not two, it's not 70,000, it's 270,000. That's really what it is.
But next year, this is just my thinking, like, they have, they find out, oh yeah, you know, we either have a whole bunch of money for next year because of the health insurance line, then they have that money then, right? But if they don't, yeah, they know, they can plan for that. You know, and just.
I understand. No, no, you can't. And this, this is something that, and I'm sorry, I don't need to get into, you know, discussions still a crease here or anything like that, but this is something where it's not a matter of principle, it's a matter of looking at it overall. It was that the budget started out at a certain point. It was that the budget started out at a certain point. We increased it by two hundred thousand last last meeting. Now it's another seventy thousand, so it's two hundred and seventy thousand dollars more than what the budget was originally proposed. That's the way that I'm looking at it. So this isn't just seventy thousand this time, it's two hundred and seventy thousand. And that's what I'm looking at because again, that two hundred and seventy thousand is now the starting point for next year. I I don't, and I I so I I I again, I don't want to have both the scope back and forth, but I think it's something that you need to understand where I'm coming from because. I was the one that was saying that I just, you know, I'm, I couldn't, I could not do it because of it's. It's two hundred and seventy thousand of where we started two weeks ago, yeah, on top of the, on top of what we had. Thank you, Mr. Trump.
Thank you, Councilman. Thanks for reading.
And also, um, we didn't talk about this outside, but we've used this in past years, the tax stabilization fund, if I'm correct. Uh, and it was used to, um. Lower the mill rate, right? So to me, when I thought about it, I say, well, we're not lowering the the mill rate, we're increasing spending and to me, that's not what this. Fund is to be used for, and that's kind of why I changed. I kind of thought it through and we didn't even. Didn't really talk about it. Um, but I just remembered using it in the past and because it's relatively new, right? It's it's.
Yeah, we put it in place. Well, no, no. We put it in, uh, we put it in, um. In my time.
Yeah, my time.
I think it was like the second year of our first, so probably about five, four years.
So I mean, that's kind of why, as I thought it through, that's where I landed.
Councilman Murray.
We are failing. And I can't. I can't vote. And support that failure.
Thanks, Councilman Murray. Any other commentary from council members?
Can you give me a second?
Yes.
Wasn't anything bad, I just forget those numbers. That'd be too late after the meeting.
I'll be here. But as far as your direct question, is this something we could support? I think that if. We were to go with that with this second number, it's something that I could consider supporting, okay?
And no, John said he could go with either number, so. And Councilor Nuccio or.
I think it's too high. You know, it's, you know, it's, it's over three, it is over three percent. And it's. You know, it. We talk about this, I've talked about this. And every year that we've done this, you raise the expenses, the expenses don't come down. They don't come down. We always say, oh, but next year. Next year, if it comes, you know, next year, if we find money, next year, if we have this and that, and we just. It's always an increase. We have money left at the end of the year. And then we increase the taxes again. The next year, so, you know, it's. I can't, I can't keep voting for budgets that are gonna. You know, it's. I don't think it's gonna pass, you know, I I don't think it is. I think history shows that it's not going to and. I don't think it's fair, you know, I I don't think we're failing anybody here except, you know, I look at it with a. Three percent increase on the Board of Ed and it's still a. An an increase for the town. This, we are putting forward a budget asking for more money from the residents. With a two hundred and forty seven thousand dollar surplus at the end of the year. Not counting the, um, the other money there, like. Yes, if we take a hundred and forty thousand dollars from the town side, that's gonna reduce that savings at the end of the year, but. It's still an increase, so it's, it's not a failure in my eyes, this is. This is what we have to do, we're funding it, just, it's. Like definitely absolutely will not support tax stabilization money to increase expenses. It's literally, I was here when we wrote this stuff. It was our tax fund, like it, it was, it was a stabilization fund to offset the mill rate to help stabilize. In years that we had turmoil and we weren't sure what was gonna happen. Um. I don't feel like we have turmoil and we're not sure what's gonna happen right now. The only people that are feeling turmoil and they aren't sure what's gonna happen right now are the taxpayers. And this is an increase in support for the Board of Ed and for the town, so. You know, I definitely will not support. Using any of the tax stabilization money to increase more spending above the three percent. For the Board of Ed. Or even on our side, I wouldn't, it doesn't matter, like to me across the board, I just wouldn't do it, it's not the intended. So I I think, you know, there's a probably at the point, did you think what you're gonna say?
No, but I was. If if Shara haven't got what she was gonna say, I think we just brought a number off. Kinda say like, so you get the tax stabilization, you got a hundred, I know you don't want. I don't wanna use that. And just last what I was gonna say, so you got one hundred and forty five. Then another two hundred, I think Lisa said at the end of the year, again, it's not music. So when do you actually use it? Because I looked at it a little differently, like. I think we are kind of at a point because we don't know about the health line, right? But the health insurance line, it's unpredictable, so it's it's the same thing as a roof cave and it's unpredictable, you try to plan for it, right? So that's just how I'm looking at it, if that is an unpredictable line. So I guess. I understand, but I'm just looking at it that way. That. Yeah. That's just me in my little funny world. I appreciate that.
I think your question though about the the two hundred and forty seven, that, you know, and I can tell you in prior years when. When I was chair and Steve was vice, you know, and I I think, I don't know if we did it my, our first year or not, but. We've looked at that, my philosophy on that is that's two hundred and forty seven thousand dollars of taxpayer dollars that we took that we shouldn't have paid.
That we spend every.
So we've looked at kind of using it for things like actually using it for projects in town, stuff like that, things that. Um, kind of like what what we're doing for the art, but what can we pay for now that will save us? So we put money towards. Wanted, we've put money towards, um, quite a few things, we've we've done quite a few different.
Yeah, and we've won the, um, library programs that. And we did over the summer, yeah, so there've been a few opportunities there.
You know, we've, we've looked at putting like using that money for other stuff, but at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's a significant chunk of change. How much was a dump truck again?
Around there.
Around there, you know? Like it's, to me, we should be looking at how can we best utilize that money to reduce stuff going forward? Not increasing expenses, but using it to, because we we taking it. From the taxpayer, we've already taken it and said we need this and we didn't need it. So now we should use it for something that's gonna benefit them. That's just my opinion, though.
I like that. Um, so if you're saying it's a one time. Use, but yeah, that's the same thing. So why don't we use that for anything in the capital budget? The one time use, I've never heard a conversation about using a hundred thousand dollars or whatever, something that's. You know, I'm here. I don't know.
That's what I was just saying.
Can we talk about that? Maybe we can reduce the capital line somehow and get a number, you know, further and again. You know, it's just. You know, I feel like if it's there, like you said, the taxpayers' money, just sitting on a fund and not being used, well, we can actually use it to reduce. Debt is, you know, and increase a little bit here, I mean, you're still using the taxpayers' money.
I think like Lisa said, the only problem with picking something up over there right now is you don't know if like an emergency or something happens and they have to use it. From now to June thirtieth, you can't count on it being there and count on the money that's. Already established, but that's always been a goal of mine is looking at, we're gonna have two hundred thousand dollars at the end of the year, I'm gonna look for a way to reduce that. Because I don't feel like we should be taking it when I'm. That's why, you know. My numbers I'm looking at, where can I find reductions that will offset so we don't have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars at the end of the year? So like you said, kind of nickel and dime it here and there, but you know, if you're gonna put forward a budget request for fifty six dollars after an overtime, I'm taking that. I'm taking that because it's like, you know, fifty six dollars. So it's a matter of how do you stop the two fifty at the end of the year?
So again, we have that other giant fund that has like nine million dollars. I always thought that fund was for emergency basis.
That actually is is basically statutory that require in a sense, you know, it's not really what it is, but it's. That's the money, like if there's a track, if there's a, like the year we have the big blizzard in town and we have like a million dollars worth of expenses for that. That's really that money, like that general fund, you should have two months of spending, which is seventeen percent of your budget. In an account, that's how we're rated, that's how our bond rating and our savings of interest and everything like that. All of that's through there, that is like true emergency, you know, a tornado comes through, a hurricane comes through and knocks. Roofs off the buildings or something like that, you have to have that, you have to have the money to carry on town operations. For X amount of months if you're out of, or unquote, business.
And our recommendation is ten to fifteen percent, the recommendation that we get is to stay in that for to keep or maintain our AAA bond, right? And I think we're at fourteen, it's change, is that accurate, Lisa?
I know it's somewhere around there, I estimated fourteen, it's in the book.
Twelve point nine, that might be, that one might have been an older year.
There's ten to seventeen percent for the, um, overall fund balance. And the fifteen percent for the unassigned. And I know I'm projecting it to go down.
The fourteen point twelve percent, yeah.
You have that page, Steve?
Well, I'm on the budget book page, but from the presentation from the public.
Okay, there you go.
And the breakdown of unassigned fund balance in twenty twenty three estimated was fourteen point four six percent of operations and. We estimate estimated is fourteen point twelve. For twenty twenty four.
Right, okay.
Three.
And that's all in the book.
Yeah.
And if you want to see it's page one seventeen.
Okay, thank you, Lisa.
I was just gonna say again, I just don't actually where. The taxpayers' money that they thought was gonna be used on something that's just. It's fine. Whatever, but I just think that. Again. I want to know Sammy, you've been very quiet over here. But. Again, it's disappointing that I didn't even get to see the option I put out there just to discuss, it was like, no. I know, everybody here, I've been very open and honest about everything I've been doing and it just feels like. This is my way or your highway and we don't wanna even talk, talk about, right? You don't wanna talk about a third option. That's all, that's disappointing. We're working together. And. At least looked at the option.
No, thank you. Thank you, Councilman, you're checking, I mean. I do concur with some of those sentiments and. You know, it's. It's a very difficult, very frustrating year, you know. At this point, I'm really looking for consensus and compromise and unfortunately, it's pushing in a direction that I'm not entirely happy about, but. You know, I'm willing to. To get to the two options that were provided by Lisa. If that can help bring us to, you know. Some form of a consensus vote that goes out to referendum and, you know, the people that I think we said it last year and people that came out and. Would we guess, you know, work together and put out, you know, joint statements and work together to collaboratively, collaboratively support it and. You know, advocate for it in some degree, so, you know, I do intend to do that with, you know, whatever budget we move forward with, so. I guess I'll just put it out there, I got either option, but it sounds like it. But Sheri again, Councilor Luber, okay with the second option where it's the one forty plus fifty off of the debt, you know, I. Can comfortably move forward with that to go to referendum and let the rest of the public have a a saying voting for it.
If you're like a promotion now, let's move there.
So I think we're just, so no, no, it's, so so right the discussion phase, so in terms of the actual agenda, unless, I mean, I want to give anyone else an opportunity to speak, we've. A- after this, you know, consideration, we moved to approval of a budget resolution, um, and at that point, we have to read out the. Just playing off the packet, we'd have to read out the exact dollar amounts for each section as adjusted from the town manager's proposed budget. Um, and then have that for discussion and vote. So I guess before we move on, is there any other commentary before we move to? Items, item five. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to put the two up there, or we vote in between the two or we're making a straw poll, wherever that or.
Well, I think, I think. I think at this point, it's the, um. The three point, uh. Zero, actually, yeah, Lisa, can you throw up this, it was the second option. That we that we had, can you ship, put it up on the screen as a share?
Sure, which one did you want? The, the, um. Ninety thousand and the fifty or the one forty and the fifty?
One forty and the fifty.
One moment. Just a moment, I'm trying to. Shut all the screens down here. Okay. Now, what is it that you'd like to see here?
The overall rate, I think.
Right there, yeah, I think we're we're good with that overall number there, I think, um. As we report the resolution, I think we have to spell out the number, I think the, what the total amount for the town, um. We'd have to know for the resolution. I think the Board of Ed is staying this, this, at least at this point, for the resolution, we're staying at the same level that was, um, proposed by the town manager. And that the town budget would be going, um. Down by. That hundred and forty thousand plus, plus the fifty, I think, so whatever the the total town government budget is.
Well, the town government budget is now thirteen five forty two, it's a hundred and forty thousand profit. And. That's just for the town portion. Thirteen five forty two oh fifty one. The Board of Ed would be still at forty two nine eighty nine eight fifty five. The debt would go down to four point seven million. And the capital would stay at four three nineteen four fifty one. And the total budget will then become sixty one five five one. Three fifty seven. And the only other, uh. Caveat in the debt service was that, um. Of course, we had changed some things in the capital improvement plan. So that should at least be mentioned. Um, it's in future years that a. A ladder truck, an aerial ladder truck came out of the debt management plan that was for two million dollars. So that was the biggest, one of the biggest impacts of being able to reduce that debt. By fifty thousand dollars because we just recently purchased the used aerial truck. So that will no longer be in the budget. So that and the HVAC system that got pushed out because we did not get the grant. Combination of those two things and the, um. The artificial turf was already, um. Already discussed in in other capital meetings that we had with the public. So really, the only change is that the aerial truck is coming out of the capital plan and that's how the budget got reduced to four point seven.
Thank you. Alright, so that puts us to, I guess, is there any further conversation before we move to the agenda item fire?
I appreciate the the work that everyone's putting in, I appreciate Ms. Hancock for what she's like running these numbers, well. This is something that's still. Higher than what I. We hope. It's, again, I think it's something that. I could support.
Thank you, Councilman, about any other conversation? Thank you, Councilor, about any other conversations? Alright, so that brings us to Agenda Five, so I would entertain a motion for the resolution, uh, now therefore be resolved by the Town, Town Council, that it hereby adopts a fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-four town operating capital budget, in the amount of sixty-one million five fifty-one three fifty-seven, to be appropriated as follows. Town government thirteen five forty-two zero five one, Board of Education forty-two ninety-nine eight fifty-five, debt service four point seven million, capital three nineteen four fifty-one, and again, that's for a total of, sixty-one five fifty-one three fifty-seven, um, set appropriations shall require an increase of point seven five, of the mills for a mill rate of thirty-seven point thirty-three. Be further resolved that Town Manager pursuant to the requirements of the Town Charter is authorized to advertise this budgetary outlay as a part of the April nineteen twenty twenty-three annual budget presentation. Meaning, I'll leave it at seven P M, approved by the Town Council on Monday, April tenth, twenty twenty-three. Or sorry, yeah, yeah, it's being approved today, so, that's okay, no worries. So, I'll entertain a motion. So, and is there a second?
A second.
Second, I counsel you to check, um, just because I've, you're pretty clearly that there's not unanimous, or on this, we'll do a roll call vote, so. Counselor, you to check?
I'm happy about it, sounds like I had a good eye on it.
Counselor Luba?
Hi.
Senator Nuccio?
No.
And I, Mr. Egan?
Hi.
Counselor Con?
Hi.
Counselor Murray?
No.
Alright, let the record show that it passed on a five to two vote. So, I am six, approval resolution authorizing the form of the ballot for the second twenty twenty-three budget referendum, and any subsequent budget referendum, the timing of the budget referendum, authorizing the town manager, or his designated place to require legal notice and local newspapers, and authorizing the preparation, and printing of an explanatory text in the mailing of same, the local residents, and in addition, send out via the town, the town's cell notification system included with an absentee ballot, in accordance with the provisions of Connecticut General Statutes nine dash, three sixty-nine B, explaining the budget referendum question.
I will.
So is there any discussion on the resolutions outlined in terms of how the question is, uh, laid out, Counselor Luba?
Thank you, Mr. Egan, I know that, that the last time that we've had this, uh, before, before this council, that there was a discussion as far as whether or not the mill rate should or should not be included, and we're asking that we need to discuss again or revisit again.
I would, yeah, I'd be welcome to revisit that discussion, cause I know last year when Lisa, I mean, you might, might be, uh, able to clarify, last year, you said the mill rate, um, can or cannot be in, but obviously, I think the mill rate's more flexible in terms of the final number, and that people are more so voting on the budget and the impact on that budget.
Are you asking me to respond?
Uh, yes, basically, so if you.
Um, yeah, I, uh, I know the charter had spoken to in the past, the spending increase and the percent, you know, of the, um, expense increase, I think, you know, it was up to council if they really wanted to have the mill rate included or not. I was just trying to go back into my records, I'm still screen sharing, aren't I?
Yes, yeah, it's okay.
Sorry, um, I'm, I'm trying to go into last year's budget, cause I may have that document where we, did the resolution, and. I'm trying to remember how we did it last year.
Yeah, we didn't put the mill rate on.
Okay, um, for the resolution. Well, I, I guess it's really up to the council, if that's what they want to do, you are trying to.
I'm not proposing it, I'm just, I know that that was a question last time, I just wanna make sure that it's clear to show that we considered it. Uh, I'm not, I'm not proponent of it, but I just, you know, because my rate of the charter is clear, as stated by Lisa, that is, just the rate and the amount, and I'm, I, I just wanna make sure that that, that's out there.
Okay, so I guess.
Try to go back to last year's.
Okay.
That was April seventh.
While you're doing that, Lisa, I'll just ask it to any counselors, but I would like the question adjusted to not include that mill rate, um, part of the question, just having the, a question regarding the budget and not the mill rate.
I think the issue is, is, um, cause the, we're not gonna know what the mill rate is, right?
Yeah, we don't actually, yeah, we, we adopt the mill rate after the budget is passed, and that could potentially change.
Right.
The budget book will reflect an estimated mill rate through all the calculations, but again, um, it is the change.
Okay, but this question as laid out here is pretty definitive, right, uh, so we at least need to change the language on that. And put in estimated.
If we were gonna put it in all.
Put anything at all on.
Yeah.
Well, technically, the charter says we're voting on the budget.
Right, yeah.
We're voting on, like, and, and then we've had a year when we changed the mill rate because we got more money and grant money.
Yeah.
The, the mill rate is derived by the revenue.
Yeah.
The, and the expense, but the, the, we go on the budget, so that's why I think it was changed last year. We just focused on what you're voting on the budget, that way, if more revenues come in, if the state budget passes and we can manage some, harmless, you know, for the ECS, et cetera, et cetera, the mill rate would not increase as much, because you're not locked in turn at that point.
Yeah.
So that's the, the pros and cons of it, um, you know, and technically, per the charter, you're only voting on the budget, not, not a mill rate.
Here is what we had last year, from what I'm finding in our files, it looks like the valid question. That was the proposed, right?
Yeah, that was not the one that was.
All right, it was not the adopted one, okay, I'm sorry, this is what I just found in the files.
So I can just.
I guess if I went back to the minutes, huh, that would be the smarter thing, what meaning was this?
I think it was four eighteen, no, not right.
No, it was, um,
Three twenty-two.
It was March twenty-ninth, so let me go back to the March twenty-ninth minutes.
You can share them, uh, but I did actually pull up the minutes, and so.
Did you, did you pull them up?
Yeah, but you, but you can share it just so it's clear for people at home and on Zoom, um.
Okay, hold on, let me find them.
Cause yeah, Lou motioned, and it was passed unanimously on the twenty-nine, that Shelby Town's, Town, Town proposed twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-three budget of, X dollars, reflecting a spending increase of X dollars, or three point three five percent, being adopted yesterday.
Hold on.
But I think if we're gonna stay in, in, uh,
Inconsistent.
Inconsistent with past year's budgets, and it should be, I think, more straightforward.
Think I'm gonna lose right now, sorry, I'm gonna make you dizzy.
Yeah, you wanna go to page six of seven? Right there.
There we go.
Yep.
Right, so it was reflecting a spending increase, okay. Thank you for clarifying that, so then.
I would just like to point out that that was a one-year change, and we have years and years of history where it was asked with the mill, the question was asked with a mill rate on it. So if you're basing a decision off historical precedence, you should keep in mind that that is the outlier, not the, um, not the most pre- common way it's been asked.
Of new attack?
I'm sorry, I just wanna say, um, yeah, I just disagree with the mill rate, then, even though I voted for it last year, I just didn't like it, cause you said, that's how it's always been, that, that it always has to, once, you know, it always has to follow the past, right? Um, but I do remember the second time it went to referendum, we, people emailed us about, they were disappointed that mill rate was on, they would have to go back and look, so, and then.
Yeah, I think like someone, some kind of thought we were really like having to dumb it down for them.
Yeah, they, they really, you know, and it wasn't just one, it was a couple, so, and maybe that is really important to some people to also see that, um, just something to think about. I mean, we talk about the mill rate a lot, right, and proposing the budget and everything else. So it's weird that we don't put them out.
And there have been years where we put out to referendum an expenditure number, it passes referendum, and then the council actually sets a lower number.
Yeah.
Um, so, you know.
I mean.
There, it seems like, um, there's precedence for including the mill rate estimated change, um, budget question.
I guess, I think I heard some relative consensus that if we were to lead in the mill rate, we should be putting in estimated. Is there anyone that would strongly oppose that before we amend the resolution to, uh, update that, so it's estimated? With regards to the mill rate?
I'm good with estimated, I think estimated gives you the, the leeway, right, cause it, it, it is estimated.
So in that case, I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution as outlined in, uh, as outlined, or as amended, to include estimated, uh, before the mill rate.
Some.
Verge. There a second?
Second.
Great, anything for the discussion, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, so that is unanimous, that brings us to item, seven, adjournment, so I would, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I'm saying not add anything, that's correct.
Um, I mean, we, I mean, we had a discussion before we move to adjourn, uh.
Oh, you have discussion?
Yeah, we, we can make a motion to adjourn in, in a second, and have any discussion, and just have a final comment before we get, we vote to adjourn. We usually rush it, we usually rush it, but at that, usually most meetings at that point wants to be adjourned, and once.
Ouch.
Yeah, so.
So much.
So I'm sorry, so there was, sorry, so I'm gonna entertain a motion to, to adjourn at nine forty-six P M, there was a social base by Councilor Murray, is there a second? Like my Councilor Lou, is there any discussion?
Yeah, I just had a discussion, so this, I'm, I'm so tired, I'm so sorry, so, now that it's six two, I would hope that we all, that, that, what, five two, I'm so tired.
That's good.
Five two. No, five.
That's right. Yeah, five two seven.
Yeah, five two, okay, what's happening right now, um, that we all actually advocate for this budget. I mean, hopefully, well, I want the same thing as this, the past, the first time, like John said. Don't wanna keep going back to that, it's cost my energy, so I just hope this time that we all voted. Alright, so at least then, you know, you know, us that did, we should be out there advocating, otherwise, why did you vote for it? So, um.
Thank you, Councilor, you need to check, I'll, I'll second those remarks and open up an invite to anyone on the council that would like to work toward the co-authored letter, or any kind of out, outreach to the community to, to do so, and we're leading into the budget presentation that will be next Wednesday. Um, I know there was a question through my, I think they're not here anymore about possibly having a presentation at the senior center. I was gonna hopefully have a conversation with Mr. Foley, if that's, it's still possible, um, if a member of the staff would be able to do a presentation or, provide some kind of time for the senior center, but if, I don't know about the availability, I know unfortunately, I work full-time and can't get that time off to, to do it, but I know in the past, I think the town manager has been able to do so on the chair, or vice chair, isn't able to, to do a presentation, so. We'll have a discussion, but, thank you, everyone, um, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous, thank you, everyone, have a great night.